Should turn on my mic before I do that. Call to order, the West Jordan City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 13th, 2024. We have all council members present except for Councilmember Bloom, who should be joining us online shortly. I also have the Mayor Burton is here and we have a lot of staff, both for the council and for administration. Let me go ahead and kick off with a pledge of allegiance from Deputy Chief Robertson. Come on down.
Will the audience please rise? Please repeat after me the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We have special recognition and I, there's no slides here, so I assume, Alan, we're going to you.
Yeah, what I would ask of the council right now is, we're still waiting, Noah should be here any minute, so if we could go to the police officer recognition first and then go to the Copper Hills High School CH Powell's recognition and then do Noah third, that would be my request.
That sounds good, not a problem. Without objection, we'll take those slightly out of order and go to Special Recognition 3B for the recognition of the police officers. Chief.
Wow. The new chambers have a monitor screen right here and there's like this glare. That's really...
Tell me about it.
Dude is really bald. Ah, thanks. That's not much better because now I can see my face, but yes. Well, this recognition really is part and parcel of awards that were given out at the NAACP Annual Luncheon earlier this year, at which one of our West Jordan residents, Noah Dizon Mon was honored and it's exciting, Noah was part of our inaugural group of outward inclusion courses that we did with our high school students and some of our community leaders and police officers. So we're anxious to see him recognized as well, but I'm going to invite up four of our officers, Sergeant Walt Bachhold, Detective Gage Hugveldt, Officer Chris Martinez, and Officer Austin Larson. Officer Larson currently is assigned as one of our SROs at West Jordan High School and Detective, where is he, other side? Behind me. Thanks, over on this side. Detective Hugveldt is one of our major crimes detectives. Sergeant Bachhold is one of our patrol sergeants and Detective Martinez is one of our VFAST SWAT operators and warrants detectives. And they were honored by the NAACP this year as first responders. I think it's significant and noteworthy that of all the police departments in the state, ours has been more frequently recognized by the NAACP with first responder awards pretty much every year, I think, since I've been police chief and that's, I think, a commendable accomplishment. They honored Sergeant Bachhold for his work with our homeless population here in West Jordan and for how he has influenced and taught other officers about resources and about helping those who are unhoused find temporary shelter and getting them off the street, particularly in times like this when it's so cold and, and we go to the cold blue status. Detective Larson was honored for his work in crashing one of our police cars. That's what happened, right? I mean, he crashed a police car. He crashed a police car into an intoxicated driver who was traveling at a high rate of speed down the wrong way on a major highway, coming toward a number of other individuals and chose to put himself in harm's way and use one of the techniques that had been taught. And true enough, our truck was damaged, but the point is, nobody was hurt. At the end of the day, the citizens who, frankly, they wouldn't have the training, they wouldn't have the courage, they wouldn't have the wherewithal to run into someone other than being crashed into head-on and potentially killing themselves or being in great danger. Ah, thank you. Janetta, come on up by me, come on up by me. Yeah. Yep, come on up by me. So we're joined now by my friend of over, well, since she was a teenager, so it's been close to 40 years now. Here we go. How are you? Have a rest. Ms. Janetta Williams, who is the president of the NAACP Salt Lake City Branch and also the Utah Idaho and Nevada. Sometimes I say Wyoming, I get that messed up at tri-state conference. So we're very proud of Austin wrecking a truck for us, that was very kind of him. Next is Officer Chris Martinez. Detective Martinez was honored for his work in VFAST and SWAT operations and for his exemplary service and really his example to others in conducting operations where we take bad people into custody without any injury to them. You know, a lot of times, I was earlier today in court in Provo testifying in a homicide trial where an officer was unfortunately killed. And I made this point to the jury, that we often use great amounts of shows of force in order to avoid any use of force whatsoever. And it's really ironic and, and I think a point to be proud of, that it's so very rare that our SWAT operators use force, so very rare. The tools that we give them and the power that we give them to use force so very often result in someone being captured who's particularly dangerous without any use of force. And Chris has been a leader in that area. And finally, Detective Gage Hugveldt, who is honored particularly for his work with, with victims, he's one of our special, excuse me, one of our major crimes detectives and has worked in major crimes and just recently had the chance to observe him working with one of our, our more sensitive victims here. Gage is a great instructor and a great mentor for his fellow officers. I'm very, very proud of all of our officers. I'm going to turn the mic if I may, with your permission, Chairman Jacob, over to Janetta Williams. Thank you for being here.
Absolutely, just now is a little late. Make sure you pull that microphone down for her.
Yes, yes. Well, thank you so much and I was running a moment too. I didn't want to get a speeding ticket. But the NAACP, our Salt Lake Branch, under my leadership at the time and now, had started the First Responders Awards in 2017. And, you know, we were proud of, of the fact that we did it before everything that had happened with George Floyd. And it was, it's a time where we recognize officers, first responders at our Dr. Martin Luther King Junior event luncheon. And that is most fitting because we want to make sure that we as a community want people to know that we're not one of the ones that's saying defund the police, that we're saying that let's recognize the police for the good work that they do. And in doing that, as I said, we, I shared the video today and so we are, we're really happy about the first responders, we're really happy about my working relationship with the chief here, that's been...
A long time.
A long time. We all say how many years, yes, but for, for many, many years. And we, we just want to congratulate the officers and congratulate you on the fine officers that you have here in West Jordan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We've actually got certificates for each officer here that's signed by everybody in the council. We'd like to get a picture, if we can, with the six of you that are there. Come on up to the front in the council, we can step down for this and let's get a, let's get a picture. We're going to invite up the Copper Hills group now. Who's going to introduce it? Alan, are you going to introduce this one?
Yeah, that'll be me.
All right, we're going to invite, invite the group up and we're just going to stay here so that when we get more pictures...
Copper Hills High School, Special Education and PALS and Officers, come on up to the, the council. And while you're walking up, I'll tell you a little bit about them. So Copper Hills High School was recently recognized with the National Special Olympics as a unified champion school. Some of you were able to go to the pep rally they held at the school last year and, or yesterday, not last year. And I've had a very unique opportunity because one of my kids are in the class. Hi, Carter. So it's been fun to see this group, so I've got kind of a, an emotional attachment to this, but I was able to spend half the day Friday up at the University of Utah watching this class and their friends play basketball in a state championship tournament and to see how they work well together. Sammy, hi Sammy, she went to prom with all, most of these kids and she was selected as the prom queen. And there's pictures of that and just a great group of inclusion and honored to be a parent of a Copper Hills Grizzlies. Right? And I needed to switch the camera so people can see them. But we'll, we'll take some pictures and we've got a certificate for the group, right? Yes. Okay, so we'll get that. So let's get some pictures. Anyone who would like to take pictures? Welcome to come up. And I think we've got three officers from the class and I don't have their names right off. It's Aubrey Hodkin, Hodgkin? Oh, oh, you've got the certificate, okay, and you'll get that to Mrs. Sheppich. Okay, thank you.
All right, and then one more, we've got Noah.
Yes, we have Noah Dizon Mon and he was also recognized by the NAACP at their Martin Luther, the Martin Luther King Day event. And his accomplishments that he was recognized for and earned a scholarship as, a scholarship from the NAACP to go to college. And, sorry, I'm trying to jump around a lot. Noah's a senior at Copper Hills High School, also Copper Hills, and he's the president of the Asian American Student Association, a member of the Cultural and Diversity Committee at Copper Hills and the Principals Roundtable. He spoke at the Utah State Capitol to the Ethnic Studies Commission. He's completed 60 hours of community service for the National Honor Society and organized two voter registration drives. He's a junior life member of the NAACP. After he graduates, he plans to attend the University of Utah and major in Ethnic Studies and Asian American History as he pursues an interest in social justice and obtain his Juris Doctorate.
Did you want to say anything about Noah and the scholarship program or anything?
We, I am from the Larry H. Miller Family Foundation and we have each year presented a scholarship at our Dr. King Awards Luncheon and every year we present the Larry H. Miller one. And it was one that Larry Miller actually worked with us and we started and it's been going on for over 30 years now. And Larry would always be there to present it and even after he passed, his family wanted to continue the awards. Noah has been a member of the NAACP and when he was running around a lot like this and attending everything and would take all the different things when we have conference, he was only maybe like six years old and he was listening so intent and he said, can I ask a question? We said, sure. So he's always been so active and we appreciate and we love Noah.
Congratulations. All right, I was at that event where these scholarships were, were awarded from the, from the NAACP on Martin Luther King Day and they handed out a lot of scholarships, only one went to a high school student and that was our Copper Hills, that was Noah. So that was, that's awesome. So congratulations all, thank you so much for being here. You're welcome to stay, you don't have to. We have a lot of things to discuss tonight, like fee waivers and amending code and it's riveting stuff. You're, you're more than welcome to see how city government works. Our next item though on the agenda, you're also welcome to, to leave. That's, that's where I was going with that, is you don't have to stay. The next item on the agenda is our public comment period, but so if you would like to say anything to the council, this would be your opportunity. We give citizens up to three minutes to basically say whatever you'd like to say, hopefully something that the city council has, has a nexus to of some kind. Doesn't have to be though, we've had lots of comments on, on, on this, in this forum. We give you up to three minutes, we typically don't engage in about... There we go, let's keep cutting out. Yeah, we do have two public hearings on the schedule for a little bit later about the fee waiver and about code amendment. If you would like to speak to those items, you can do so either during this period or during that period. You're welcome to speak during both periods if you want to speak on different topics, but don't speak on the same topic twice, no, no double bites at the apple, so to speak. So we'll go ahead and open that up. If there's anybody in the room who would like to address the city council, go ahead and come on up and give us your name and whether you're a West Jordan resident and, or what city you live in. And we'll give you three minutes and there's a timer on the screen, just so you can keep track.
My name's Rick Sterner, I'm in District 2. This Mr. Bobador was just elected for our council mentor. So this past year, I've been asking city officials to address my complaint concerning the commercialization of our neighborhood. Specifically, my neighbor who has established a heavy equipment sales office, a construction yard and a solid waste facility on his residential property, we are Zoned RR1. Last July, I think some of you remember, I sent some pictures of some of the debris that he was bringing onto his property, I sent it to the councilman, the mayor and the code enforcement officers. With the help of the mayor, some of this has been removed. The heavy equipment sales office is gone, most of the, most of the construction equipment was removed from the property and my neighbor installed the fence and I wasn't able to see what he was doing anymore, so I was resigned to the fact that the waste that he had put on his property was going to stay and I was good with that. Well, November comes and dump trucks are showing back up on his property, the jackhammering's going on again, of him breaking up these concrete pieces into manageable parcels that he can bury again, which he did. When I contacted code enforcement on it, I was told that he felt it was a game that I was playing with my neighbor and he wasn't going to address it at that time. I talked to our city administrator about that and he was going to look further into it, get back to me. We just had a meeting with the city administrator and the mayor and they gave me the definitive answer that they're probably going to let this material stay in his backyard. And I'm kind of against that because I feel that it's a landfill, we're in a residential neighborhood with equestrian type lifestyle. This is affecting my well-being, my property value, and it is against the codes which you have implemented for our city. And I just want to know why my city will not enforce the rule of the law that says this is landfill material, it belongs in a landfill, they're not going to make him remove it, his property's three, two to three feet higher in some areas, up to five feet higher in other areas and it's an acre parcel, but the half acre that he's using his disposal on it. I was just hoping someone could give me a solution to why I have to live against what our codes and ordinances say, that it doesn't apply to him. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we'll have somebody from the mayor's office get back with you. Is there anybody else, there was a couple others in the room, go ahead and come on up. Again, give us your name.
My name is Laura Shitt and I'm 17 years old. I live in Copperfield, Phase 1, West Jordan. Those of you who have been sitting on the city council for a while will remember the concerns that residents of my neighborhood have brought up regarding the 9,000, the proposed expansion of 9,000 South around our area. Although there have been previously, there has previously been much discussion regarding this subject, we have a few new city council members since the recent election, including our district representative, council member Shelton. In order to familiarize the new council members with our specific situation, as well as to help all the council visualize how the plans for 9,000 South will affect us, I would like to invite all city council and other interested staff to walk through my neighborhood with me along with my neighbors on Saturday, April 13th at 2:30 PM. We would like to get acquainted with the new city council members and also share our thoughts and concerns about this 9,000 South expansion. Given that this type of decision is voted on by the entire city council, I would appreciate your efforts to come and get to know our neighborhood. I have a written invitation that I'd like to give you. May I do this at this time?
Yeah, go ahead and hand it to our council office director there, it's Mr. Anderson. Thank you. Thank you. Come on down.
Good evening, my name is Amy Mata, I'm a resident of Salt Lake City and I'm a volunteer with a nonprofit organization called Bailing Out Benji. Coming to take me away? No.
No, you're fine.
All right. Tonight I wanted to talk about how puppy mills are legal and the federal, in 1966, the federal government passed the Animal Welfare Act, known as AWA. It's the only federal law in the United States that regulates the treatment of animals in research, teaching, testing, exhibition, transport and by dealers. The act is enforced by the USDA AFIS program and they enforce it by an inspection program. The Animal Welfare Act, AWA, requires wholesale breeders and dealers who supply animals to pet stores, like the puppy store in Jordan Landing, brokers or research facilities to be licensed with the USDA. Breeders and dealers are required to meet the minimum standards of humane animal care and treatment established by the AWA. And for, speaking on the definition of animal in AWA, it includes cats, dogs, guinea pigs, hamsters, rabbits and farm animals. So all animals are lumped together and that's why dogs and cats in mills are treated no better than farm animals or the other animals in the act. So the, in my opinion, the federal law is flawed and it's not the only one, but I won't go on. The Animal Welfare Act was just like a 180-page document and so much fun to read. It does state that primary enclosures for dogs and cats must meet some minimum requirements. Basically, they must provide shelter and protection from extreme temperatures and weather conditions and provide sufficient space to allow each dog and cat to turn around freely, to stand, sit and lie in a comfortable, normal position and to walk in a normal manner. And what they do is they measure the dog from snout to the base of the tail, then they add six inches and that is the minimum amount of space that dog is required to have throughout its lifetime in the mill. And I encourage the council to consider a humane pet store ordinance and of course, I'm available for any questions or discussions. And next week I will discuss how the USDA inspection system is flawed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room like to address, yeah, you guys know how this works, come on down. Again, give us your name.
Hello, my name is Jerry Leader and I'm a resident of West Jordan here. I represent Sugar Creek Condos, I'm on the HOA board and what I'd like to address and show my concern for is we're having problems with trees along the Bingham Creek fence line that we share a fence line with, with the creek in November. We sent a letter to the city council and it was addressed then in November by Ty Nelson with Forestry and he asked if, if he could have some time because it was a complicated concern and we never heard back about what is going on. And I finally got a call back from Jared and Kevin with Stormwater, I guess they're the superintendents with Stormwater and they told me that they actually are responsible for keeping the trees trimmed back and, and going above the fence line. And they said that they would, if they would give us until about May, that they would try to have those concerns taken care of. And I just, just want to share with that that, that we do need that trimmed back because it's actually knocking over our fences and roots are growing underneath our fences there at city, at Sugar Creek. One other concern that I would like to share is that we have a large problem in the last few years with somebody vandalizing and knocking down our fences. And in the last, in February, there was two incidences alone where somebody is kicking in the fences to get from Bingham Creek side to Redwood roadside. And it, it costs our HOA $200 each time that those planks are removed or kicked in. And I have reported it to West Jordan Police and I'm just waiting for a phone call back from them so I can actually do a report and let them know that there's vandalism with the fence. Then also, we would like to try to see if we can get any help. We have a neighbor that through, our condos have been here for about 24 years and they have allowed their trees to grow up against one of our fence lines and it's knocking down our fence line, but they refuse to, to even acknowledge when we sent a certified letter asking them if they will trim those trees back. And so we're hoping that if we can get any type of help or support in what we can do with a neighbor in West Jordan that refuses to, to deal with their overgrown trees. And those are our concerns that I, the board has asked me to address with the city today. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to have somebody reach out to you shortly. Thank you. I think we're going to have somebody reach out to you shortly.
How's it going? I just live over by Jacob. I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Burton and you guys.
Give us your name real quick.
Oh, Trevor Roseberry. Sorry. For the Highland, that fee that we have to pay in our water bill, just the grounds are getting a lot better taken care of than they were. So I noticed that the difference. So I appreciate that. And I just wanted to reiterate that I know that there's a few people that love the design of Daybreak. Us homeowners out in the area, we don't love the design of Daybreak. So as the land's getting developed out there by us, out there by Bacca's Highway, over in that whole area, I know Ivory I think owns most of that, but they'll develop it and whatever builders build on that. We're not a big fan of high density. I understand that we need to have some affordable living in around in that area. I, I understand all of that, but we don't want any of the high density out there. We don't want the plan of Daybreak out in that area. We love the design that's going out there as of right now. We don't want to alter any of that. And then also if we can try to incentivize or do something, we got Harriman Village out over there off of Mountain View on one hundred and thirty-fourth. There's a lot of good restaurants going out over in there, which try to entice some of those restaurants to come out over here into West Jordan closer to us. Us as city residents would greatly appreciate that. And thanks for all you do.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to address the council? State your name, sir.
Chris McConaughey, West Jordan resident. And the upper, that's a lot nicer than what we had before. It makes it a lot easier. Thank you. Also want to say thank you to the mayor's office for the update on the website to allow you to report different items that come up, whether it's a pothole or issue with graffiti. The staff's response time on that is incredibly impressive. We had a contractor for a public, well not contractor, subcontractor for Century Link out in our neighborhood and they had drilled a whole bunch of these little holes throughout the street. Take a picture, send it in. The next day we had somebody from the city out there inspecting, getting the contract on the phone, getting the fix like that. Very much appreciate that. Also, I wanted to say thank you. I'm sure you've heard some of the frustration with how some of the new fiber, not Google Fiber, but another company doing fiber in some of the neighborhoods has been somewhat problematic. Thank you again to the mayor's office and for everybody who keeps coming out. The city inspectors have been very quick to be out there. The public utilities folks are absolutely fantastic and super responsive. It's really nice to be able to see how much the employees of the city care about taking care of the residents. So just want to say thank you tonight. That's all. Please continue to fund them and make sure they have the resources that they need because it's very appreciated when they can quickly respond and take care of some of the things that would otherwise make life a little slightly frustrating. So thank you for funding them. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room who would like to address the council? All right, seeing none. Ellen is, or Mr. Anderson, anybody online who would like to address the council?
Yes, Mr. Wilkinson has raised his hand online.
All right, go ahead and get him dialed up. Think you just need to unmute and good to go? All right, you should be good to go, Mr. Wilkinson.
Okay.
There you go. Ah. You guys hear me? We can hear you.
I'm getting a weird shot. Unbelievable. I've been making this in these weeks for the last couple of years. It wasn't a year in the news. It's all no, it's intentional. The answer is more just the when I listen to my it was completely so believable. You guys suck. I hope the officers still there's a state one dash A dash seven the I see over the night in your I see officer I see them witness people violate this law and they don't do anything. They're basically playing around with their backs. Can we the only thing I can't buy is time. And maybe and you people waste time when they violate this law. I'm sure there's people in this room who violate the title. Forty-one dash six give it a look. If you're the ones my progress you are breaking the law and should be charged with an infringement. Now the West thing to enforce law. So I don't know. I don't know. Deputizing me. I will work free and I will make money. You deputize me, I will make you thousands of dollars. Every week I will issue a citation for this. Put me on your roster. Make me a slave. I will be happy to do this for you and resolve this problem. I really thousands of dollars every day when I've been spending time. Take me up on it. I would love to do this for you. This is my public service to you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the council?
No, no one else has raised their hand online. Thank you.
Nobody else online. Let me just mention, just for the record, as of six oh nine, which, sorry, it was about a half an hour ago almost, council member Bloom has joined us online. Period. And come to the, next item on the agenda is reports to council. We'll start with city council reports. This is your opportunity as the council to let us know what you've been up to. We'll go to council member Green first.
So first off, Mayor, we need to do a wellness check for Anne Marie over at Bingham Creek Library. We haven't seen her for two meetings. We need to find out if she's
Oh, that library is under construction. That's why. Okay, thank you. Over the last couple of weeks, a couple of things have happened. With, luckily to make my schedule easy, I, I'm sure they did that just for me. The Association of Municipal Council Meeting was canceled, so nothing to report there, but the, the great thing is that who was it? Me and the mayor and several police officers and firefighters, including the, hey Derek, have you still, have you harassed the chief of police enough on the, why he wasn't at the Dr. Seuss Day and you were? But we, we, we got the, the opportunity to read Dr. Seuss at Heartland Elementary here a couple of weeks ago and that was a, a great event. And I, it was just a couple of days before that able to participate in the We the People event over at Jordan School District Building that was run by West Hills Middle School. Thanks to council member Whitelock, she reminded me at the last minute and I actually got there. I would have missed it. So she kept me in line on that one, but that was a great event to see junior high school, middle school aged students talk about the Constitution and be involved in that. Those were some great things that happened in the community over the last couple of weeks that just wanted to make sure everybody knew about. And say it was great to, to be part of it. Thanks for the invitations to everybody. And, and I noticed that we have, and if anybody hasn't noticed and I'll just say this out loud, if anybody's watching has paid attention, it looks like based on the city email today, part of the Jordan River Trail is closed because it's flooded at seventy-eight hundred south. So if you're trying to use the Jordan River Trail right there at seventy-eighth, you may have to use something besides your, you may have to kayak through the trail to get there, but, so please pay attention to that as you're driving to the city. And, and Mayor, hopefully we can get those guys on Seventieth South to get their, the trench closed. Since we got Seventieth and Seventy-Eighth, all, is it, did it get opened? I wasn't down there today, so that's good. So thank you. Council member Whitelock.
Thank you. It was great having the students here from Copper Hills High School. That was fun to see them doing that. What I know as a mom from, with a special ed kid is I know that that teacher must be amazing. And because I hear from Mr. Anderson who has a child in that class, he verifies that she is because having worked in those classrooms, it, it takes a special skill set to help those kids achieve and go that far. I was really worried for those students when they were celebrating because they were letting off confetti with really loud noises and and sometimes that can set those students off, but between their pals and their teacher, they all had what they needed to be able to enjoy that moment. So that was fun to see them do that. And as council member Green said, I always enjoy We the People. What I like about We the People, if you don't know, it's a national program. And the students learn not just about the Constitution, but then when they come, they have to articulate how, how it applies to life, their life, to life today, not just, they're not just repeating what they've learned. They have to, they have to articulate how that applies and, and it's fun to hear them. So I appreciate the teachers that give us opportunities to come and be a part of their, their students' activities. Thank you.
Council member Shelton.
I just wanted to report that I met with the, some representatives from West Jordan City Police Department Fraternal Order of Police. We discussed some of the needs of the police department that I won't bring up now, but one thing they did request, and since I've got all your ears now, they said that they would love to have each member of the West Jordan City Council come on and ride along with them, have that experience. Even if you've done it before, they'd like to have you come back. And I just want to reemphasize my support of the police department. I feel like I've, every time I've, I've gone in there and met with them, I've made new friends and just wonderful people. And then I think the other things I was going to report on, I know Kayleen talked about and, and Mayor Burton will talk about as well. So, sorry, council member Whitelock already reported on that and Mayor Burton will as well, so.
All right, I'll just quickly mention that I was also at the, the CH PALS event at Copper Hills yesterday. And I wish I'd have said this when they were still in the room. My, my daughter, my, my second daughter, the one who just got married a week and a half ago, was a CH PAL at Copper Hills. She took that class and worked with those kids while she was attending Copper Hills. And then she went on to UVU the semester after she graduated high school, you know, the next fall. She had started attending UVU and got an on-campus job working with tutoring autistic kids as a, as a continuation of that program that, that she started at Copper Hills High. She went on a mission, came back and got a job with a behavioral therapy group down in American Fork who also does this. Now she says she loves her job because she gets to go and play with kids all day. So that class, that opportunity, not just, doesn't just benefit the, the kids that need the pals, it benefits the pals, right? It benefits everybody and it really benefits the community. So just wanted to say that. All right, moving right along. The next item on the agenda is on my other tab on my browser, which is the council office report. We'll go to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, council. Just a few things. In, in tonight's packet, you've seen some new reports that are new for the city council. When you authorized the hiring of a policy analyst, a couple budgets, well, a budget a half ago. And then our original policy analyst left for other employment while we're getting this ramped up. But in this packet, Mr. Hallmark has provided some council staff report. That is something that he did in another municipality as a policy analyst. And so we've, we've started adding those to packets. You'll start seeing those come up. I would appreciate your feedback if we're giving you enough information, enough data to fill you in, give you the, the background that you need, whether it's code, money, financial, that you can make those decisions. So continue to see those. But we would appreciate your feedback. This, like I said, is new for the city council, but something that, by the funding of the position that you asked for. The other thing that we are working on the council office is a legal style guide. So we're hoping to have that completed, working with the attorney so that we can bring some consistency into our code. That's the next thing that's in our queue. We are finishing up with the attorney's Title I, Chapter Eight revisions and the Title II to bring back to a committee of the whole as you instructed us at the last committee of the whole meeting. I've registered the majority of you for the Utah Legal Cities and Towns Conference that's coming up in April. The youth council is volunteering with several other entities with our event staff. You've all been invited to the Easter egg hunt on April thirtieth at nine AM out at the soccer fields.
That's March.
Oh, March, yeah. It's all been one giant day for me. And then there's the, the luncheon next week with Utah Foundation that the majority of you have asked to attend and the city has made accommodations for that, for those of you that are choosing to attend. We continue to get stuff moved in to the, the new office. The lectern, which is a different color currently from the old scheme, is going to be reskinned shortly. And hopefully by the next meeting, it'll match the furnishings that are in here. So we're, we're getting into new space very well and we have a flex office space for any of you to use. We're also able to assist you now with return to town hall meetings and those type of things. If there's things that you want to meet with residents about, we can help you organize those events and provide you material that you can give out to residents about that open house or town hall that you'd like to do. And that's what I have for tonight unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions for the council staff?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, council.
All right, moving right along. We'll head over to the mayor's report, Mr. Burton.
First thing I want to do is follow up on something the resident was talking about when he said reporting issues. So we've always had that on our webpage. You could always do it, but we have made it more user-friendly. So next time you have an opportunity to see an issue, if you're out riding your bike around or maybe driving and you see something that needs to be attended to, feel free to get your phone out and go on the website and you can log it in right there. And if you don't know what the address is, you can use your phone location to report the location. And then you just put it in there and it'll send it to the right department. It will. And it might take a couple of steps, but it'll get there and then you'll get a response back. So it's very more user-friendly. So the more eyes that are seeing things that need to be taken care of in our community, the better response we could do. So any help we could do on those would be great.
That reminds me, I've got some photos to show you.
Thank you. And then council member Green, about Seventieth South and Thirteenth West, that is open, but it's got the steel plates down there. They aren't able to pave it until it gets warm enough to get the permanent paving. So once that gets warmed up, they'll pull the plates off and pave it. Okay. They put fill there today? Okay. And then any of you, when you want your ride alongs, just drop me an email and I'll pass it on to the right people and they will contact you directly and schedule some ride alongs with you. And council member Shelton's right. It is a good experience to have and I've always enjoyed doing those as well. Okay, now let's get back to the items that I had planned on. The first one is now let's get back to the items that I had planned on. The first one is, now this is pretty exciting. As a result of being on the board of the Utah League of Cities and Towns, they came up and said, hey, we need someone to serve on the Uniform Building Code Commission. And, and I said, oh, 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 choose me. And they said, okay. So I put my name in, and they came back and said, sorry, you don't qualify. It needs to be someone who is a licensed inspector in the state of Utah. And I said, oh, okay. So I sent my application into DOPAL and got myself, so I'm now a licensed inspector in the state of Utah, and now I qualify. And then I, so I sent this in, and the governor has now appointed me to be on the Uniform Building Code. And the reason that is so important, this is the commission that puts the information together, that gives it to the state legislators, so they know what to have to vote on. Now, by the time they get it and they modify it, it could be different, but at least it gives them the information they need to start with. So I'm extremely excited about that, and our city can be well represented on, uh, on uniform building codes, because that's a big deal for the entire state of Utah. And then, uh, we talked about Dr. Seuss already, so I won't carry on much more about that, but, uh, it's always fun. I love March. Fortunately, I have the hat for the occasion as well. First Fridays, they are continuing to be spectacular. This is last month's first Friday. Please prepare for next month's first Friday. We probably, the kids ahead of time got to make birdhouses and paint them all up, and that's what they're doing there. So if people make the birdhouses, there was about 142 birdhouses that got painted, and then 350 people attended the free concert. So it was a lot of fun. And the concert was Sesame Street songs performed by Alicia Wrigley Septet. Anyway, so the music got recognized in a jazz format, and I really like jazz mu- music too, so it was spectacular.
Mayor Burton, what's, what's the unofficial attendance at the, those concerts? Do you know? Are we talking like 300?
I, I, but 350 is actually a little bit lower than it normally is. Usually it's higher.
Thanks.
And sometimes it's so big they have to open the next section. This time they just have the two sections. And then, as you are aware, our Employee Health Center grand opening happened. I see the mug that, uh, council member Green got there because he attended that. This is so good for our city, for our employees, and for their families, and for you and your families. This is great. And I've already taken some advantage of it, and this worked out very well. We hope you will, and enjoy the opportunities to go there. Okay, green waste is getting ready to start. It starts the first full week of April, which is actually the second week in April, so keep that in mind. And so, you know, there's a couple of changes on there, because Trans Jordan is not doing green waste anymore, and because they're not doing green waste anymore, right now, our, your green waste can will be picked up by the same can that picks up your trash. And that will continue to go until the end of the season like normal. There is a possibility, that we're still working on, that there could be some other opportunities where we could take our green waste too that may charge us less than there. But, don't worry about it, because when green waste goes to the Trans Jordan landfill, they use that, and they seal it in their, their cells, and they capture the gas from it, and they use that to generate electricity, and then they sell that electricity that is generated and goes out to, uh, provide service for people who need electricity. So, it's, you want to increase that. So Trans Jordan is happy that that green waste is going to be going in there. We're still looking at other options that may come up. So, people can still use the green waste just like before, and the only difference they'll notice, the same truck's picking up both the green waste and the normal trash, until something else happens differently, which, if, if and when it does, I'll let you know. And then get ready for the Easter egg hunt, you guys talked about that. We're excited about that. It's, uh, probably the biggest, fastest event that we have that happens. In just a couple of minutes, it comes and over. So, don't be late, or you'll miss out. So we look forward to seeing you at our Easter egg hunt. And yes, it is in March, not April. Okay, and that is my report. Any other questions? I'll move over to-
I think we need to redefine the word hunt, hunt for Easter eggs. It's the Easter egg pickup.
Hunt is where you try to put your vehicle to park.
Yes, hunting for a parking place. Any questions for the mayor? Seeing none, let's go to the city administrator report, Mr. Lee.
Nothing further to report tonight.
All right, that was the quickest one ever. Like an Easter egg hunt. All right, next item on the agenda is our, uh, item 6A is a public hearing. This is for a fee waiver, is Resolution 24-006, uh, authorizing a fee waiver in the amount of $750 for the nonprofit group Una Mono Amiga for the Dia Del Niño event. And we'll go to Mr. Anderson. Excuse me.
Um, thank you, council. Um, the, uh, city council has previously adopted code that allows the city council to waive fees in compliance with Utah State Code and its own city ordinances. Um, Una Mono Amiga is a 501(c)(3) organization here in West Jordan. Uh, they've been operating for about 22 years. Last year was the first year they came to West Jordan. This is a, a second event in West Jordan. Um, last year, the council asked, uh, because if you remember last year when this came up, uh, the, what, one of the items that was on the application was the $500 deposit that was included as part of the fee waiver. The council had asked us that the deposit should not be waived, because it's a security deposit. They'll get the deposit back when they, uh, return the city facilities in a non-destructive manner. Um, and so we have corrected that. So, they have a deposit of $500, um, for the reservation of the park, and then the park fee, based on the consolidated, uh, fee schedule, is $750 for the time that they're using. There were a couple corrections since the application was submitted. Um, they, on the application, they had put attendance of 800, which would require a, a mass gathering permit from Salt Lake County. In talking to attendees that attended last year, uh, and with Una Mono Amiga, they are anticipating 200, which is what, uh, should have been on the application. We have added, uh, some fields to the future applications that talk about when a mass gathering permit is required. We have talked to the county about that. Um, so anyway, the only limit, it's totally a legislative purview, it's up to the, uh, consensus of the council. Their event, uh, the other change was their event was originally scheduled on April 24th, or 7th, 27th. The, since the agenda was published, uh, they asked if they could move it to the 21st, and Parks, I'm told, has agreed to that. You are limited by state law that you can't, uh, waive fees greater than 1% of the total budget. That has been calculated at $684,000 annually, uh, for this budget cycle. That has not been reached, um, yet, and I doubt it will. Um, but the fee waiver for tonight, uh, for Una Mono Amiga for April 21st is $750.
Any questions for staff, clarifying questions before we open the public hearing? Miss, council member Bedore.
Uh, I just wanted to thank you, though, for getting that clarification in on the number, because when I first saw that, I've had some major event- I appreciated that.
Anything else? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this. Um, this is the same kind of rules and procedures as during our citizen comment period. Uh, if you'd like to speak to this issue, now is your chance. If you're online, please raise your hand on the Zoom, uh, app. And if you're in the room, come on up. Anybody like to speak on this? Seeing none in the room, Mr. Anderson, anybody indicating interest online?
Uh, no one online has raised their hand. Thank you.
Perfect. We'll come, uh, clo- go ahead and close the public hearing, then bring it back to the council, council member Green. I'm going to move to approve Resolution 24-006, authorizing a fee waiver in the amount of $750.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by council member Green, seconded by council member Bedore. Discussion to the motion. I'm seeing council member Shelton's light. Go on, go ahead.
I just wanted to, um-
Quickly mention, um, I, I spoke with my daughter about this-
Uh, item tonight, um, and I said, I think I'm in favor of, of waiving that fee. And she said, that's great, Dad, but what if they damage something? They need to pay for this, a 12-year-old girl. And so I'm really pleased that, that, uh, as a council, we have the foresight to not waive that $500 deposit. I think that's smart, and I appreciate that.
Excellent. Further discussion? All right, seeing none, let's have a roll call vote.
Great. Council member Shelton?
Yes.
Council member Bloom?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Council member Bedore?
Yes.
Council member Green?
Yes.
Vice chair Lamb?
Yes.
Council member Whitelock?
Yeah.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Next item on the agenda is ordinance 24-11, amending Title I, Administration, Chapter 4, Elected Officials' Conversation, Chapter 6, City Council, Chapter 9, Human Resources Procedures, and Employee Conversation System, and Chapter 15, Elections. And I probably didn't have to read that whole thing, but I did. Uh, let's go to Mr. Anderson for introduction.
Thank you. I don't know that it needs too much of an introduction. Uh, this was discussed back in January, then at the February Committee of the Whole, um, where a couple more changes were suggested. Those changes have been implemented. Mr. Boyce here from the city's legal department, who drafted it, is here to answer any questions you may have regarding this, but we feel that we have, uh, entered in or amended all of the, uh, code that you have requested through the various meetings that we've discussed this section. Uh, we are not, you are not approving Title I, Chapter 8, which will come back to a work session at your request, or Title II, which will come back to a work session at your request.
Thank you for the introduction. Any questions for staff before opening the public hearing? Love it. All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, if anybody would like to address the council on this item, now is your opportunity. You have three minutes. Uh, please indicate a desire to speak if you're online by hitting the raise hand button, or in the room by, heck, raising your hand, or standing up and coming to the podium. I know, I'm not seeing any of the handful of people here raise their hand. Anybody online? Mr. Anderson?
No one online has raised their hands. Thank you.
Perfect. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring this one back to the council for discussion and a motion. Council member Green. I'm going to move to approve ordinance number 2411, amending, just like you have it worded in your stuff, Cindy.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from council member Green, seconded by council member Whitelock. Uh, discussion to that motion. We'll go to council member Green. Uh, thanks for, uh, the work on this. I think we've got a good product. I would have liked to have seen more red lines with deletes, but, you know, hey, we'll get there. Uh, I like seeing that, I like seeing red, red deleted stuff in the ordinance, but thanks to those who worked on this, I think we've, we've got it where it needs to be. Thank you. I'd just like to note for the record that we're approving a change in code according to this motion without a, a single wordsmith from the dais at this point. So, hey, cool. All right, seeing no further lights, we'll go to Ms. Quick for a vote.
Vice chair Lamb?
Yes.
Council member Bedore?
Yes.
Council member Green?
Yes.
Council member Whitelock?
Yeah.
Council member Bloom?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Council member Shelton?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
Making quick and efficient work of the agenda tonight. We're going to item 7A. This is Resolution 24-009, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County allocating funds for property acquisition at 8600 South between 6400 West and U111. I was just going to ask if we could just move to approve it, but, well, we could have it-
We'll let Jer- we'll, we'll let you go.
You know, that wouldn't be out of order. Are you okay if we just move to approve this? Because all it means is we get $800,000 to help finish a road. So I'm going to move to approve Resolution 24-009.
Second.
All right, this is Jeremy's easiest night ever. We have a motion from council member Green, seconded by council member Whitelock. Any discussion to the motion, or questions for staff? All right, and seeing none, we'll go ahead and go straight to a vote.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Council member Whitelock?
Yes.
Council member Bloom?
Yes.
Council member Shelton?
Yes.
Council member Bedore?
Yes.
Council member Green?
Yes.
And vice chair Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
Thanks, Jeremy. Wonderful. Uh, it, it's because of all your amazing prep work, the report was complete, the maps were there, everything was good, so we had all the information we needed. Um- I'm going to move to approve the consent items. Consent items. We have a motion to approve. The consent items? Well, we can have a discussion of the motion. Is there a second on the motion to approve? Okay, I'm not seeing a motion to, uh, or a second on the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Oh, well, there we go. We have a motion to approve from council member Green, seconded by council member Bloom. Let's go to council member Whitelock on a discussion to that motion.
I think we should say something about the calf. Well, I don't know what you call it now, it used to be a calfer. Yeah. Um, it, it does. I'll just say, what I, what I want to say is I think the choice of pictures on page 66, Ms. Steck, was very interesting, and thank you for the report.
Okay, now I gotta look at page 66 and see what the pictures are. But it's gonna take a minute to, uh, to load. There we go. 66. I'm pulling it up. Oh, my, yeah, interesting picture. Animal Services Rescue. Okay. All right, uh, there's a motion to approve on the table. Any further discussion to that motion? Okay, this does have a resolution, so let's have a roll call vote.
Council member Bloom?
Yes.
Vice chair Lamb?
Yes.
Council member Whitelock?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Council member Green?
Yes.
Council member Bedore?
Yes.
Council member Shelton?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
Move to adjourn. A motion to adjourn, I was just gonna call it a adjourn- Uh, from council member Green, seconded by council member Whitelock. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, and we'll have a redevelopment agency meeting here in a moment.